Okay, I'd like to start this meeting, please, of the Town Council. Would all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to let everybody know that Jody Valencourt is excused from the meeting this evening. Other announcements. Thursday, July 23rd, at 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., the Town Council will be having a retreat at the Surruss Conference Center, 29 Commerce Drive in Bedford. The Town Council will meet once in the month of August and will resume the regular meeting schedule in September. The meeting dates are as follows. Thursday, August 20th, 7:00 p.m., here in the Matthew Thornton Room, regular council meeting. Thursday, September 10th, at 7:00 p.m., again in this room for a regular council meeting. And Thursday, September 24th, 7:00 p.m., again, here in the Matthew Thornton Room, regular council meeting. Eileen? For one time, I remembered it.
Oh, I didn't remember it. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day will be held on Saturday, August 1st, at the Nashua Public Works Garage at 9 Stadium Drive, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. For a list of acceptable materials, please check out the Solid Waste Division's site on the Town website. There is a fee of $10, which covers 10 gallons or 20 pounds of material. That's all I have.
That's it. Okay. Kinder Morgan proposing out these Energy Direct Pipeline Project information. A couple of things. Now, you're going to be doing the dates later on, right? The scoping?
Um, yes.
Okay. I'll still mention it, and you can reiterate it, if that's okay with you, Eileen. Okay, there's going to be scoping meetings with FERC. They're scheduled for July 29th, at the Radisson Hotel in Nashua, from 6:30 to 11:00; and on the 30th of July, in Milford Town Hall on the third floor. Again, the same time, 6:30 to 11:00. I've been told that the venue in Milford is really small and cramped, so just as long as you know that if you go there on the third floor, and there's no AC, from what I hear either. But we would strongly encourage any citizen interested to provide testimony. We're going to be talking more about this under the new business item on the agenda under number five. Survey agreement, still not decided. In the packet, we have presented what was recommended. It is still being negotiated as we speak. There are things we have not come to terms with, but we want you to know that we're still working on it, and it's not done yet. Okay? Amherst support letter. During the last meeting that I was not here, there was a decision made about supporting the Amherst letter that had previously been sent regarding the pipeline.
It was not a decision made.
Correct, but there was a proposal made. And at that time, Jody had distributed a draft letter. So what I would like to do is get the consensus here of the council to be able to get some feedback on your assessment of that letter. And if it is approved, as is, without changes, then we'd have to have a motion that also says that Eileen can sign for it. So I'd like to open that up for discussion. About the letter. Yes, Tom?
No.
Oh, Billy, I'm sorry.
You know what? I don't have the letter.
I gave you an addition.
I apologize.
It was given out during the last meeting by broad extra copies.
I apologize.
And Eileen emailed it, yeah? Yeah, during the last meeting, Jody actually gave out hard copies. Do we have feedback for, or suggestions for changes? Personally, I thought it was very well-written and encompassed everything. It basically said that the Town of Merrimack supports the positions and concerns related to FERC by the Town of Amherst in their June 8th letter, and offers the following additional and supplementary comments and concerns, and basically goes into a little bit more specifics related to our own particular issues. But that's just my opinion, I'm not sure. What are your opinions?
I concur.
Finley?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so could we...
Madam Chair, I would move that the Town Council authorize the Town Manager, Eileen Cabanel, to affix her signature to the letter dated July 16, 2015, as presented.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mahon. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any against? None? Okay, and Jody's not here, so we're going 6-0-0. Whoops, here's the letter, Eileen.
And just to thank Council of Valencourt for doing...
That's the original right there. Okay, that took care of one other thing. The other thing I'd like to add here is I'd like to thank Governor Hassan for press release a letter that she has sent today to FERC requesting more scoping meetings. As I've mentioned a couple minutes ago, there are only two scoping meetings scheduled, and probably, I guess they're working on a third one, but there's a large part of the pipeline that is inaccessible to a lot of these meetings. You have New Ipswich, who's going to have a compressor station, and they're supposed to attend Milford, whatever. Anyway, she wrote a very strong letter to FERC, really requesting additional scoping meetings. So I just want to officially thank her from Merrimack for that. Hopefully, she'll be successful. Okay. And that's all I have under Kinder Morgan. Okay, comments from the press and public. Oh, I'm sorry. See? Go right ahead.
Some of this you have already said. On the 30th of June, Paul and I attended a coalition meeting in the morning, and attended the Amherst-Kinder Morgan meeting in the afternoon, where they proposed new routes. I have copies of the map available in my office for anybody that wants one. They're not that easy to read, but they're large, so you can get a better sense of what they are. Then, on the 7th of July, Paul attended, on the Town's behalf, a meeting with a coalition with Congressman Custer. And then, we have a meeting set up with Congressman Ginta on the 19th. There was, as many of you know, there was a proposed settlement agreement has been drafted between the New Hampshire PUC staff and Liberty Utilities regarding the capacity need, which basically states that, for all intents and purposes, that the PUC staff agrees that the 115,000 decotherms that Liberty is saying that they need is okay. So the next step is for it to go to the PUC, for them to modify or ratify it. We have received answers from Kinder Morgan on the questions that we asked and members of the public asked, and I sincerely apologize, I received it sometime in the middle of June, and it got lost in my inbox, and as I said, it was just a mistake, although even though the letter doesn't really say anything. So it's on the website now. I also received a call from a representative from Kinder Morgan who wants to hold an open house, which Tom M. describes as a craft fair, where they'll have, that they had before, you know, where they have the different disciplines all around that you can just ask questions for. And it's scheduled sometime at GMU's in September. We haven't come up with a specific date yet. I asked them a bunch of questions about why are they doing it, since we've already been through that whole process, and they said because they want to make the public aware. And I said, "Has something changed?" And he said he didn't know, and, you know, I mean, it kind of went like that. So I'm not sure why that's happening, except they're probably getting, starting to get pushback from the, you know, various officials who are, you know, insisting that not enough time has transpired between, you know, when this was first presented, et cetera. Senator Shaheen left a voicemail message for the Coalition Chair, saying that she has reached out to FERC also to delay scoping meetings. Also today, Kinder Morgan announced that the Board of Directors approved proceeding with the NED Pipeline Project at a 30-inch diameter pipe, 30 rather than 36, and it's a $3.3 billion project. And that's all I have.
One thing I did forget to mention, during that scoping meeting, I have been appointed to represent the Town Council for testimony, so I will be giving verbal testimony as well as written. Okay? There'll also probably be a majority of the council present, and for our public knowledge, we need to make sure you know that. It's not going to be a meeting, but we will be present, so just to make it public. Okay, now we're ready, right? Comments from the press and public. I just wanted to remind, I wasn't here last time, so I'm just going to do, although I watched it, I'm going to have a little reminder for everyone. This is a comment section, not a question-answer debate section. So if you have a comment to make, that's fine. If you have a question, it's up to the Chair to answer, unless I need to direct it to someone else to answer. Okay? Okay, now let's go on. Comments, please.
Hi, Deborah Huffman, 60, Amherst Road. Just a couple of quick things about the scoping meeting. I just want to sort of reiterate what Chairman Harrington said. The scoping meeting that's probably the most convenient for people to attend is Nashua on July 29th, starting at 6:30, they advise you get there an hour early. It's really important that a lot of people come, even if you don't speak, because it shows the level that we care. And the more we can tell them about scoping, whether you believe the pipeline is inevitable or not, is sort of irrelevant. I mean, if it does come, we really need to have the scoping, investigate everything it possibly can, and find everything, and just protect ourselves, protect our town. And that's where you get the chance to do that. Just to physically be there, even if you're not going to speak, shows them that we really care, and we really want them to do a good job. So please, I encourage anyone who's interested at all to attend the scoping meeting, Nashua, July 29th. And secondly, I just want to thank Eileen for getting those questions and getting those answers. It's fine. It's typical Kinder Morgan. Essentially, what they said is, "Yeah, the Town doesn't count." What I read in that especially, I want to compliment staff, though, because a lot of those questions were excellent, from our emergency people, and our fire people, and our police people. They asked some really pointed, very important questions. Mostly what they heard in response was, "Yeah, we do it our way." No, Town doesn't get notified of that. No, Town doesn't get to talk about that. No, Town doesn't know about that. That was mostly what we heard. But nonetheless, congratulations to staff. That was a really, really well-done set of questions. So, you know, that's just the way Kinder Morgan is, and that's the way they treat us, you know? So that's about all I have to say. Please attend the scoping meetings if you have any interest whatsoever in what's going on, so they know we're serious. Thanks.
Thank you.
Carol DePiero, 10 Cambridge Drive.
I was just talking about how hot I am, so it had nothing to do with you.
Oh, because... I'm just curious. I know they announce these meetings, but it sounds like things are kind of changing. There are proposals from Amherst now that Kinder Morgan is proposing.
Yeah, we don't know. Obviously, it's not in the original resource report, it would probably be in the next one that's going to be coming out. In fact, we had met with our attorney before this meeting, just to update us. We don't know whether that's going to be discussed at the FERC meeting or not, but that would pretty much be it, right? There's nothing more than that.
I just didn't know if it was worth... I know I personally have asked them to postpone, because if we're dealing with a whole new route, then how do we get rid of it?
Just to let you know, the Town Council is sending a letter asking for postponement.
Great, thank you.
Just as a... Because of a lot of reasons, but that's one of them.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Eileen?
And Carol? I also have copies of a really large map that we, that Paul absconded with at the meeting. So if you want to pick up a copy in my office, happy to give it to you. Okay? Anyone?
Okay, no one else? Okay. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements. Recognition of retirement of Town employee tabled from the June 25th Town Council meeting. The Town Council will present a recognition award to Roger L. Dakota in recognition of his retirement from the Wastewater Division of the Town of Merrimack Public Works Department, effective June 30th. So you're actually retired now, right? With more than 32 years of full-time service. And Jim Taylor, the Assistant Public Works Department, Wastewater Division, is going to start the discussion.
I first met Roger in a night class that we were taking at the University of Lowell back in the early 1980s, and at that time, Roger was working at the Manchester Wastewater Treatment Facility in the Industrial Pretreatment Program. So I said, "It just so happens that Merrimack just created a new industrial wastewater pretreatment manager's position, so here we are, 32 years later, and Roger's now retired." But he essentially took a program from scratch and created what really is a model program. In 1999, EPA recognized the pretreatment program as one of the best-run programs in the country, and more recently, in 2010, Roger was recognized for a regional award in New England. So I can't think of a better person for the job than a more dedicated Town employee. So Roger, thank you very much.
Well, come on in, still we can all hear you. Go right up there. I really, yeah, Roger Dakota. I really didn't prepare anything tonight. It's been a pleasure to work with everybody. I mean, we've developed really strong bonds down in Merrimack, down at the wastewater plant. I mean, we really work well together. I mean, these people have been there. A lot of these people have actually been there longer than I have, and Jimmy was one of them also, and, you know, we've been there a long time. We've really, you know, we just keep sticking with it and just kept going, you know? There were times that weren't all that easy, there were times that were a little more difficult, but we just kept plugging away. So I just want to thank everyone, thank the Town for, you know, bearing with me and the wastewater plant. I mean, we had a, they gave me a little party today, and I got a lot of gag gifts. They'll probably share that with you. I'm not the one that uses technology and the computers as much as a lot of the other people, so some of the gifts were pretty funny. So, and they got some pictures and stuff. So appreciate everybody. It's been a pleasure to... I didn't, when I took this job, I didn't think I'd be here this long, but I never gave it a lot of thought. I mean, you just keep plugging away, and the next thing you know, I can't believe it. So anyway, thank you, and, you know, like I told Jim, if there's anything that I could do, and if I could help out the new person or anybody, I'm here. So, thank you.
Just representing the Town Council, we want to thank you for your years of service. And also, representing the citizens of Merrimack, I want to thank you for your years of service. And I can't imagine the gag gifts you'd go out for wastewater treatment. But this is not a gag. This is not a gag. This is your new rocking chair.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not sure if the camera can post it on it.
Oh, geez, I guess it is.
Yeah, rocket.
I'm not, I'm not ready for a retirement.
This is a test.
I'm not ready for a retirement.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Retirement's great. Retirement. And my understanding is, I had a question, was you going to take it or have it delivered? And I heard you're going to be taking it with you.
I'm going to get it delivered.
If not, we'll make sure it's delivered. Good luck and enjoy it, and good health.
Thank you.
Okay, recognition of Town Committee members. The Town Council will present recognition awards to the following individuals for their service to the Town of Merrimack. I'd like to do it two separately. The first is Kristin Newell, and I'm going to have her come up in a moment, but I have to first apologize, which I've already done to her. There was a glitch in the certificate, we're going to make sure it's corrected, and she has it delivered to her. But the certificate says, "In recognition of your service as a member of the Merrimack Heritage Commission, in recognition of your dedication and commitment to public service during your appointment as a member of the Heritage Commission. Your service and devotion to the Heritage Commission has had a valuable effect upon this community. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty." So come on up. Come on up here. And I should have read this. I should have read this while I'm up here. First of all, again, I want to thank you for the time that you spent, not only from the Town Council, but the Town of Merrimack.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate it.
Go ahead. Shake your hand. Thanks again. You have good luck. Oh, because you can. You can. Okay, Lawn Woods, come on down. Come here.
I'm answering.
Too kind. You're too kind.
You're so kind.
Okay, this is a plaque that's presented to Lawn Woods, "In recognition of the dedicated service you have given as a member of the Town Council for the Town of Merrimack. Your dedication and donation of countless hours has made Merrimack a better place to live and work. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance, July 2014 to April 2015, presented on behalf of the Town of Merrimack and the citizens of Merrimack. On this July 16th," it was supposed to be the last meeting, and now it's, no, today is the 16th. I'm all confused.
It's on.
It's on.
Okay. Brevity being the soul of wit. Thank you, fellow council members. The acceptance and camaraderie of those few months, for that you have my undying gratitude. See, Jackie here, I know what we go through and appreciate. All the best to all of you, and my eternal gratefulness. Thank you.
All right, I'll talk to him. Yep. The younger just still there. Very good. How many hours, Tom?
How far back do you want to go?
We always have to appreciate our volunteers. That's, believe me, we have a terrific staff, but half of what goes on in the Town is the volunteers that work in the various committees and the various boards, so we need to make sure that they are appreciated. Okay, appointments, none. Public hearing submitted by Captain Peter Albert, but Lieutenant Matt Towlettin is here, right? Okay, the Town Council to hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance, you can come on up, "An expenditure of a grant from the New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $35,250 for five-day training of the department's containment team pursuant to Charter Article 8-15 and RSA 31:95-B." Just a little bit of clarification. There was just a question about the money. It had been posted for public hearing for $35,250. We subsequently heard that there probably is more money, the ammunition that would be included in the grant, but since it was posted for $35,250, that's what we have to address tonight. Okay? So in the future, however, at a future meeting, we can deal with the $3,450 additionally that requesting, because there'll be more specific details as time goes on. Okay? So we have to, if there's ever a motion, the motion has to be for the original posted for public hearing amount, which is $35,250. Okay? So go for it.
I'm looking at running now? Okay. All right, well, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to present this grant acceptance. And basically, this opportunity was brought to our attention through Emily Maricello, if I'm pronouncing her name right. She's the Exercise Training Officer with the New Hampshire Department of Safety and Homeland Security and Emergency Management. And we worked with Emily for the better course of last year, developing policy and talking about active shooter response and so forth. And we actually did a live scenario at the high school to conclude the year-long, it's worth of training and so forth, which went really good. And during that timeframe, she mentioned this training opportunity to Captain Albert, because she was aware that we had this containment team, and she was the one that turned us on to this Ogon's Group, if I'm pronouncing it correctly. Basically, it's a veteran-owned business that's New Hampshire-based, and they provide specialized training to police departments. And the nice thing about these guys is they tailor their training to your specific needs. And in our case, we wanted to focus on active shooter, because that's what we've been working on. So it's a week-long training. There's two days at their Dalton, New Hampshire range, get some firearms training there. And the remaining three days are going to be doing building-related training. We have the old Merrimack Hotel at our disposal. Captain Albert is able to get ahold of the property rep there, he's going to let us use that building, which is great. For Wednesday and Thursday and Friday, we're going to conclude at the elementary school, Master Cola, and we got the school's approval on that, which was great, too. School's been great. We've been doing some training in the schools over the course of the two years that we've had this team, and I just think it's a great opportunity, and I hope it's accepted. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Questions from anyone? Okay, entertain a motion?
You have to open up the hearing?
Oh, excuse me, there is no motion. It's a public hearing. These are the bureaucratic details I'm still learning. Okay, there's no questions. Now, we asked for a public comment, right? Okay, public hearing at 7:32. Well, that's what I thought I said. Open a public hearing at 7:32. Look at the rush coming up. As usual. Now, there's no one interested in addressing this as yet, so I can close a public hearing at 7:33.
Madam Chair, I move that the Town Council accept an expenditure of a grant from the New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security in the amount...
We had been told by, told by our attorney that this evening is really going to be an introduction and the first reading. Public hearing comes later. So, you will notice under item number four, under new business, it is written as proposed zoning ordinance, so that's where it is going to be introduced and considered first reading. Okay? Okay, legislative updates from state reps. Look at all of them here. Town manager report, Eileen.
The governor and council has approved the Transportation's Alternative Program, or the TAP grant, which will be used toward the construction of approximately 2,500 linear feet of non-motorized multi-use path that will connect Watson Park to the pedestrian crossing of the Salhegan River. It was installed adjacent to the federal, the Epi Everett Turnpike's Merrill's Marauders Bridge. The new path will connect the town center area to residential and recreational areas, including Wildcat Falls Conservation Area and Merrimack High School. We have begun the consultation selection process and are ready to move as fast as the Department of Transportation will allow. This was something that was brought up several meetings ago, but there was some question as to whether or not the governor and council were going to approve it. This is the same grant that we were talking about, and they have, in fact, approved it. The Manchester Bridge over Penishuck Ponds is now open for traffic, and the ribbon cutting was yesterday.
However, not half the road closed to a water project.
Say that again?
The road's now closed because there are water projects going on, new pipeline.
Just to let you know, I thought I'd throw in a joke, I was at the ribbon cutting yesterday, and of course, the mayor from Nashville had a few words, and we're standing there, "Nancy, do you have a few words?" And I says, "Well, you're just lucky we didn't put a toll on it." And she just laughed and said, "Well, obviously, this was decided before you got on the council." I just laughed. But I did follow up with saying that this was an example of how when all parties work together in cooperation, big things can happen, so, even though it took a while. And she showed us the two eagle sites that presented a, what, two-year delay or whatever it was? Anyway, go right ahead.
The, obviously, the town-wide paving is progressing. For the latest updates, check out the town's website or DPW Facebook site. The new, long-awaited new waterfront parking area at Wasserman Park is now opened. This parking is available only to Merrimack residents and requires proof of residency, either a current Town of Merrimack transfer station sticker or one of the rearview mirror hang tags valid for 2015. This new parking area features 20 parking spaces that are located at the bottom of the hill on the site of the former camp dining hall facility, which will make it convenient for residents to access the town beach and eliminate the long climb uphill after enjoying a day at the lake. Thank you.
Okay, old business. I've basically touched on this already, but I'll do it again. The Kinder Morgan Survey Agreement, and you'll see a copy that is in the backup. The first change that had been requested and has been agreed to, so on page two, is the dates changed from May to June. That has been agreed to. And the second change that we had requested is literally the terminology requests, amendment of any report. Basically, we want to be able to view the report before it's sent to FERC. And they're having a problem with that. They've also added about three or four more requests, which we just found out about before this meeting. And we said yes to some and no to others, but we're not going to say what the end result is until it's done. So, all we need to really know is, it's not done yet, it's still being negotiated. And hopefully, this last sparring will come up with a final survey agreement. Okay? So, that's basically just an FYI. Yes, Bill?
Regarding the dates, we're in July now, do we need to change that?
We can mention it to the attorney.
I'm not trying to be...
We'll mention it to the attorney.
Thank you.
Right? Because we're going to have some communication. The big thing is through November.
Between those dates.
Right.
Dates already going, so let it go.
Okay.
It can't happen before June 30th.
I'm just...
And they've held to that.
And they've held to it?
Well, actually, they have. Okay, on to new business. Art in the Park Event, Abbey Griffith Park and Town Hall Parking Lot, submitted by Town Center Committee member Jackie Flood. Town council to consider the request from the Town Center Committee to invite the Artists' Association of Manchester to hold their annual event in Abbey Griffith Park on Saturday, September 25th. Come on up, Jack.
Great. I wonder if I could have another chair for Nelson?
Yeah, let's bring.
Phil's got two over there.
I got a monopoly going.
Nelson, you thought you were going to get away with sitting in the background.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Lori Lefleur, who is the chairman, I think, president of the Manchester Artists' Association. And Nelson is our Town Center Committee Chairman. The Manchester Artists' Association, that's okay. The Manchester Artists' Association really draws from all over the state, and, what, outside the state a little bit?
Yes, and Massachusetts.
Do you want to bring the microphones a little closer to you?
And I don't think Don Reed is here.
There we go.
But, yeah, we also have Merrimack artists that are members also, of course. And the Town Center Committee had casually talked about an Art in the Park event, and before that, Watson Park had. And we had always looked forward to doing it, but there was, never seemed to be a real opportunity. And we heard through the grapevine that Manchester was looking for another venue, that they were, they had always had it by the river, but this year decided that they might not. So, we got in touch, contacted with Lori, and it turned out that, yes, they would be very interested in coming to Merrimack and like the little Abbey Griffin Park. And perhaps you wouldn't mind if Lori explained to you what these events are like.
Fine.
Okay, well, we usually have, oh, we have been averaging between 20 and 30 artists, which means pop-up tents. And with Manchester, we, we usually had to furnish all our own stuff. We did not require police, we did not require traffic. We furnished our own porta potty, and I think that's about it. All we required was the space, the park. And that's why we, we managed the rest. So, if you have any more questions, maybe I can answer them.
I'm sure there are lots, yeah.
Will this be displaying and selling, or just displaying?
Well, the hope is selling.
Selling and will there be a contest or...
Yes, we have judging, first and, first, second, and third prize. And we have a professional artist judging. And we take care of that also.
Now, what kind of artists are they, paint, photography, what?
We include paint and drawing and photography, and also digital art. We usually stick with the two-dimensional. But every once in a while, we'll have a sculptor, but, but we do not want it to be a craft fair. It's going to be fine arts fair. So, it's a different dimension there.
Nice. Any other? I'm sorry, Jackie.
Oh, yeah, that's all right. And I think in your packet, you saw a little, like a little map, and it will hold up to 60. If, if the event is success and people enjoy it, we could hold quite a number more. Keane, for example, has about 90. And they are really stuffed into a, like a three-acre park. Right downtown, that's kind of fun, too. This would be the same day, this is September, what is it, 26th?
Same day as Merrimack Rocks.
It's the same day as Merrimack Rocks. They won't overlap time-wise hardly at all, I don't think, and the parking, we shouldn't compete, because we plan to use the parking lot right, parking right around here, and it's going to be coming and going anyway. And I assume that Merrimack Rocks will use the, the park, yeah, until that grass is nice and green.
We thought it was a good crossover event anyway, so people who would be there would find out about the fireworks later that evening, so we just thought the whole, the whole timing was, was fantastic.
Originally, we had toyed with the idea of having it part of the expo, but the expo's going to be moved up to the high school this year, which is, and the bandstand is such a cute place for the art show that we preferred the later date.
It's a complimentary venue, having it there.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's lovely, yeah. It is, it's very sweet. Anything else you'd stand?
Rain or shine?
The time would be, the show would start at 9:30 till 5 o'clock.
But if it rains?
If it rains?
If it rains, the next day.
Okay, so, so if it is raining, it would be canceled?
That's right.
Yeah, till the following day, okay.
It'd be postponed.
Yeah.
Not canceled.
Postponed. Thank you.
Any other questions, Tom?
You're expecting, on the order of 20 to 30 people to set up, or...
Participants, because it's the first year here, usually a new location, it takes a few weeks, years to build up.
Okay.
So, I would say 20 to 30 would be a fair number.
And what kind of traffic do you expect to get? I mean, you're, you're a long distance, you're a long time from 10 o'clock or 9:30 to 4:30, 5 o'clock.
Okay, we usually, we will not allow them to start before 7:30 in the morning.
Well, set up, but I'm more concerned about the, once these people get set up, how much traffic are we expecting to see going through the parking lot? I mean, you're expecting 20 people or 500 people?
It sometimes comes in bunches, you can't, it's unpredictable, especially if a new venue, I would not know.
I mean, so I'm concerned that there's a lot of time there, that there may not be anybody there, or there may be times when there're just a few. Is there any entertainment or any effort to, to put out music or do anything?
We're trying to line up somebody with music, yes.
Okay.
Last year, we had a guitarist that would spend the day with us.
Okay, and no food vendors or any of that sort?
No food vendors, unless they want to put one on.
Would you object?
Pardon?
Would anyone object to a food vendor? If the Boy Scouts or something?
The plan shows a food booth.
Oh, does it?
The plan shows a food booth.
Oh, yes, so it's us.
So, I guess you weren't planning.
Somebody was.
The possibility.
If the Boy Scouts or the Merrimack friends and family or whatever wanted to do that, would you object?
No, I wouldn't object, I'm just trying to understand how much of an event it's going to be and whether it's going to be disruptive to, to people. And it sounds like it's not. I didn't expect it to be disruptive, but I wanted to bring it out publicly and have people actually say what the anticipation is, so that people that are viewing can have some idea.
Yeah, I've been to both the Keane and the Nashville events, you know, in past years, and there is a lot of coming and going, there is. And hopefully, a lot, because it would be fun to have an event that the artists felt that they could sell some things and exhibit, and the Merrimack people can enjoy looking at it and buying.
It'd be nice to be able to have some volunteers that could actually play music in the bandstand.
It would be lovely, it would be lovely.
A classical.
Yes.
Or so. Or you could actually just put music in, playing it in the background. That would be sort of a nice background.
That's a good idea, now that we have, I think we have speakers down there, no. We had some for the Christmas parade, but I think they're moved.
But that's an option that you could think about.
I think PNR has a sound system.
Yeah, yeah, I know we have one set up for Christmas, but I guess we can't leave it there.
Talk about Parks and Recs. They might, Park and Recs might have something that you could use for the day.
Yeah, yeah.
And just have recorded music in the background, soothing, sort of go, I'm trying to think of the atmosphere.
Yeah.
Rock and roll, just a nice classical.
They could go to the rock and roll later.
Rock and roll.
Yeah, really. I mean, come on. The purpose of this really is to call attention to the parks.
Oh, okay. Okay, between certain times, you'd have. Okay, yes, Finley?
I'm very supportive of this idea. From the first moment I heard about it, I thought it was a great idea. I first, I saw Art at the Zoo fence in Honolulu, Hawaii, and it was the greatest thing going, and they hang their stuff on the fence, basically.
Oh, yeah, that's cute, too.
So, it was a blast, a lot of fun. But this, I think, this is a great event, and I hope there's a turnout, so we will be able to possibly see it more than once. And I've also seen, the Art Association's been in existence, it appears, for 49 years.
Yes, it's our 49th Art in the Park.
That's spectacular. So, I'm in favor.
Okay, and with that...
We could always use a little bit more culture.
Well, that's what I was trying to, you were saying.
Speak for yourself.
Any, any trainings of dogs playing poker or velvet elvises?
On velvet.
Is there, is there a standard to your organization?
There'll be something for everyone.
Okay.
See, that's why I was thinking, stairway to heaven is not culture.
Stairway is not culture.
It's not that culture I was thinking of. Okay, any further questions?
Come on.
Culture, cultural, maybe. Anyway, I would entertain a motion. Yes, Finley?
I hope just move that we allow September 26th, the event to be, the Art in the Park event to be sponsored by Town Center Committee in Manchester, look at this, the Art Association.
On?
On September 26th in Abbey Griffith Park.
There we go.
And waive any associated fees? Oh, if there were fees, and I would move that we, in fact, waive those fees, yes.
Second? Okay, motion by, made by Finley Rothouse, seconded by Dan Dwyer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's the majority, six, zero, zero. Thank you very much, I look forward to it.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you then.
It's going to be a great day, you know, fireworks at night.
Fireworks.
The best fireworks ever. Just, they were spectacular.
What was this?
It's unbelievable. Okay, you start out gentle and then you end it with... Okay, second on our new business designation of economic revitalization zone for Anheuser-Busch and Space Optics Research Lab. I request town council authorization to submit application to the New Hampshire Department of Resources and Economic Development to designate the parcels located at 15 Karen Street and 221 Daniel Webster Highway as economic revitalization zones, presented by Tim Thompson and Mike Bergeron.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the council. In your packets, you should have my memo dated July 6th, requesting the council's authorization to allow me to formally submit applications to designate both Anheuser-Busch at 221 Daniel Webster Highway and the potential location for Space Optics Research Labs at 15 Karen Street as economic revitalization zones. Many of you probably remember, back in 2012, I was in front of the council with the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee, at which time, we were able to have the council authorize the designation of the former Zylas and the former Shaw's parcels as ERZ districts through the state of New Hampshire, both of which been approved. In addition to that, there are also several properties along Continental Boulevard, most notably Atria Medical, as well as the parcels at 57 and 59 Daniel Webster Highway, which is NanoComp Technologies and the former National Corp Facility that are also existing economic revitalization zones in the community. An economic revitalization zone is a state tax credit to the business profits and business enterprise tax that businesses are eligible to apply for if their parcel is in a designated... presented by Tim Thompson and Mike Bergeron.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the council. In your packets, you should have my memo dated July sixth, requesting the council's authorization to allow me to formally submit applications to designate both Anheuser-Busch at two twenty-one Daniel Webster Highway and the potential location for Space Optics Research Labs at fifteen Karen Street as economic revitalization zones. Many of you probably remember, back in two thousand and twelve, I was in front of the council with the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee, at which time we were able to have the council authorize the designation of the former Zylas and the former Shaw's parcels as ERZ districts through the state of New Hampshire, both of which been approved. In addition to that, there are also several properties along Continental Boulevard, most notably Atria Medical, as well as the parcels at fifty-seven and fifty-nine Daniel Webster Highway, which is NanoComp Technologies and the former National Corp facility that are also existing economic revitalization zones in the community. An economic revitalization zone is a state tax credit to the business profits and business enterprise tax that businesses are eligible to apply for if their parcel is in a designated ERZ. There is no local impact in terms of taxation for local property taxes or anything on the local level. Both Anheuser-Busch and Space Optics have expressed interest to DRED to consider designation as ERZs. Mike and his staff from DRED contacted me, I've prepared the applications with the exception of signing them, and should the council look favorably upon this request tonight, I would be finalizing those probably at the beginning of next week to get those off to, to the state. The turnaround time from the state, if last time in two thousand and twelve is any indication, within a month we'll know the answer. The final part of that application is not only the authorization from the council to have me sign the application, but the minutes reflecting that the council has authorized that action as well. Certainly able to answer any questions. I know that Anheuser-Busch is obviously a pretty familiar location to everybody in town. The property of fifteen Karen Street is located on the east side of Daniel Webster Highway, about a quarter mile or so north of the Greeley Street intersection, you get to it through Herrick Street. The parcel is about fifteen or so acres, it's a vacant facility that Space Optics has been working with Michael and his staff to move from Massachusetts into New Hampshire. Space Optics is an optical manufacturer dealing with aerospace technologies, laser sighting. They're, they're a very complimentary business to a lot of different businesses in the area, such as Colesman or the.
NanoComp.
NanoComp as well, another facility, the, it's escaping Insight Technologies in London area is another similar type of facility that utilizes the type of things that SOLO manufactures. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Eileen?
How, are they moving their, their existing staff from a small, or are they expanding their, their business here to New Hampshire? Is it, is it an additional location, are they moving, and how many staff?
They would be moving from Massachusetts, I'm not sure the exact number of their existing staff, Michael might be able to help out with that. But I do know that the.
Well, here it comes.
The owner of the business did indicate they would likely adding three additional staff people if they did make the move here to New Hampshire. The additional space would allow them for future expansion possibilities.
Yes, I'm Michael Bergeron, State of New Hampshire, hi. Department of Resources, Economic Development. They have about fifteen people now, and he, he did a great job, by the way.
Thank you.
Say too much. About the three new staff would, would come with them, and they had a struggle finding the right type of building, you know. A lot of family owned companies want freestanding buildings that are in the, you know, fifteen to thirty thousand square foot range, it's tough to find. So the last building they had in Merrimack, there was a bidding war, and they lost that bid, and they found this building here, which seems to be a good match as well, so a good example of family run company looking to come to New Hampshire and, and establish a long time, long time roots.
Excellent, any other questions? Finley?
The Karen Street property for SOLO, did you say it was north of the Greeley Street intersection?
It's northeast of Greeley Street, if.
Behind Fimble Door. That's south there, isn't it? About south, yeah.
South, I'm sorry, you're right, southeast, I'm, I'm sorry. My mistake. No, you're, yeah, I forgot, 'cause Star Drive is just to the south there.
I didn't trust myself either, 'cause I was thinking.
Southeast, yes.
It was a test. We were paying attention. Finley, I'm sorry, Dan?
I need someone with some institutional knowledge on this question, but Karen Street, just by observation, there must be a reason why it's not a through street, obviously, you would think that you would be able to, that would be a better road, a more direct access road, is there a reason why it's, it's not in use?
Predates me by many years.
Yeah.
You, you remember Tom, or?
No.
Nelson, do you have an history here? He does, he has an answer to that question.
I knew somebody in the room had an answer.
Talk about an institution in Merrimack, here we go.
I'll try. It used to go all the way to Route Three, and when the state rebuilt Route Three for shortly after Anheuser-Busch arrived, which was about nineteen seventy-two, they rebuilt all that section of Route Three, and they cut it off and made it go around. It was for, they wanted to sort of limit the number of cuts into Route Three, and also the steepness of the hill there, after they relocated Route Three, it came closer to the properties, and so they had a steep drop off to get down to it, that's my recollection of it.
It's the best recollection we have in this room.
Thank, thank you.
That makes sense, because.
Oh, one more quick.
Nelson, what was the business, what did the business used to be?
Oh, I don't know what business was in that building right offhand, because the numbers don't ring a bell with me. If I looked at the building, maybe I could tell you, but I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe Tim knows, in fact.
From this view, I, I can't, I don't read them.
Okay, thanks anyway.
I didn't know they was there.
There's a lot of little back places. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, wanna have a motion?
Madam Chair, move that the town council authorize Community Development Director Tim Thompson to submit an application to the New Hampshire Department of Resources and Economic Development to designate the parcels located at fifteen Karen Street and two twenty-one Daniel Webster Highway as economic revitalization zones.
Second, Finley Rathaus, okay. Motion by Bill Boyd, secondly by Finley Rathaus, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, just very quickly, I think this is exciting. I mean, Anheuser-Busch is established, but I think the, the solar optics coming to town, it speaks, it speaks a lot about Merrimack making a commitment to not just promoting economic development, but promoting, promoting some of the entrepreneurial spirit that exists out there. So, a lot, a lot of thanks to Mike and to Tim for introducing solar optics to the eighth largest community and the sixteenth safest community in the, in the United States. So, thank you, good work, and thank you very much, and welcome to, to Solom.
Any other comments, or? None, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minimum six, zero, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Can I suggest that we move item four up here? So Tim can get out of here.
Now, why would we wanna be nice to him?
I don't know, why don't you, why don't you tell me?
Oh, we're gonna, no, we're not gonna be here till eleven, we're going on a good roll, unless someone does a lot of talking. Okay, yes, if it's okay with everyone, I'd be very happy to move this up. Which, this one?
Yeah, this one.
Okay. We're gonna move up the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Earlier, I stated that this is to be considered first read, right? Introduction and first read, and go right at it now, presented by you, or?
Yes.
Yeah, go for it. I have my name down here, not Tim's, that's why I was confused.
Thank you again, Madam Chairman, members of the council. At the request of Town Manager Eileen Cabanel and members of the council, I have taken the opportunity to put together three different sections of zoning amendments as they relate to alternative treatment centers for the distribution of medical marijuana, as has been recently authorized by state law and regulations from the State Department of Health and Human Services. The, there is interest that we are aware of, of a dispensary location looking at the town of Merrimack for a potential location. There are, I believe, four different regions within the state that have been designated by Health and Human Services. There can be one dispensary in each of those four regions. Our region, I believe, includes Nashua through to, I believe, Manchester, not to Bedford, but not quite to Manchester. So it's a lot of Hillsboro County and a large portion of the southeastern part of the state. Knowing that under our current zoning ordinance, if we were to do nothing with the ordinance, in consultation with the town's legal council, it was determined that the closest existing use that we have within our zoning ordinance would be retail pharmacy. So we would have to permit this type of facility anywhere where retail pharmacies are permitted currently, which is in our commercial districts and by conditional use permit in the industrial district. After meeting with Eileen and Tom Mahan, I put together a series of definitions, conditional use permit criteria and sign requirements, there are a mix of ordinance language of ordinances that have been adopted in the cities of Concord, Dover, and Laconia. The definitions in section one, which are on page one dash two of your document, would be to create a definition for alternative treatment center and subdefinitions of treatment center for cultivation location and for non cultivation location. Those definitions are modeled primarily off of the city of Concord's ordinance. And then I would then renumber the rest of that section. The second set of amendments would be in section two point oh, two point two, it's on page two dash twelve of the packet. That would be to set up conditional use permit criteria that the planning board would need to consider. The proposal is to allow these by conditional use permit in the, the same districts where they'd be permitted today. That would be the commercial district or the industrial district. But instead of it being a permitted use, it would now require an extra level of scrutiny. They would have to meet the criteria from this section in order for the planning board to grant a conditional use permit. This language is modeled primarily after the city of Dover's ordinance. And then lastly, section seventeen, which is the last page of your document, would be to add some signage requirements for alternative treatment centers, and these requirements are based and modeled after the requirements that the city of Laconia has adopted. From this point, should the council wish to move forward with this ordinance, would move to a planning board public hearing, which will be posted tomorrow for the August eighteenth planning board meeting. And I believe the council would be meeting at the twentieth of September, which is a couple of days afterwards, so the council could potentially hold their public hearing and second reading two days after the planning board, if you so chose to do so. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have at this stage.
Bill? Tim, is there any reason why no hours of operation are alluded to, or is that considered to be the jurisdiction of the planning board as a part of the cup process?
It's something I believe the planning board could certainly stipulate as part of the conditions of their approval and part of the conditional use permit process. I certainly don't think it's unreasonable if the council wishes to have that added into the proposed conditions that the applicant would have to meet, I think the planning board would certainly amenable to discussing that. I just, generally speaking, try to avoid having hours of operation in a land use ordinance as much as possible, as I believe they're probably better suited for a general code of ordinances for the community.
Continue.
I read the, the Concord, Dover, and the, and the Laconia ordinances, so I'm, I'm happy you were able to create a hybrid for us to look at tonight. Though the one interesting thing that I noticed that's lacking, and maybe it's, it's lacking for a purpose, is that it, it doesn't say that you can grow. And my, my question is, is, would the, would the word cultivate or manufacture allow these ATCs to be able to grow cannabis on the site?
No, there, there's two different types of conditional use permits that would be allowed. In the commercial district, what I'm, what is proposed is that it would have to be a non cultivation location. I did add that a potential cultivation location could be located, but only in the industrial district, because per the state rules and regulations, it has to be internal to a building, and it really lends itself to more of a manufacturing type of operation than anything else, more than an agricultural use. So, we, I did not include it in the commercial districts, but I did include it in industrial. My understanding is that, based on the information that we're aware of, that Merrimack is not being considered for a cultivation location, that there is another community in the region being considered for that.
So what's being considered would be considered be a dispensary?
A dispensary and a non cultivation location.
One last question, Madam Chair?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Regarding signage, this is a First Amendment question, you know, obviously, there, there are certain words associated with cannabis, and then there's other things that kind of have a, what I would term a new age holistic approach to what they're doing. Is that going to be at the discretion of the planning board to work with the applicant to come up with a name that would be fitting of a location of, of our particular community?
I think so, and I also think that, in particular with the signage requirements, I did model after Laconia, but given a recent US Supreme Court case dealing with content based signage regulations, it is something that I'm gonna wanna review with the town attorney to make sure that we're on safe legal grounds. I wanna make sure that we're not going too far with what's proposed here.
I mean, I, I can't say what, I gotta.
You don't want a big weed, sort of.
Well, that, well, that's what I was gonna say, I don't want, I don't want a big, you know, you know, you know, red and white sign that says Ganja King, you know, I just, you know.
To be dispensary.
Do be dispensary, I mean, yeah, I mean, I mean, that's, you know, it's.
Don't get any ideas.
Anyway, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Yes, Dan?
I just wanted to state whether people at home or watching, or any of us, are pro or, or against. The fact is, the state has taken a step in making it legal for medical purposes at this time. So I think this is a good thing that we're just gonna be a little proactive and, and have our ordinances and zoning in place. When and if, it's uninevitable, people at home should know, it's uninevitable that it's coming here, maybe it will, maybe it won't.
There've, there've been many communities across the state that have been enacting these ordinances over the last six, eight months.
Be better prepared is obviously, I think, the, the good thing to do here, so.
I agree.
Thank you.
Finley?
I guess, I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't treat it as a pharmacy. The cultivation component and the zoning of that appropriately makes good sense to me, you know, if it's gonna be happening on the property. But the statute allows for the regulatory authority, which is spoken to in the information you have given us. So I don't know why we would go through the extra effort, as, you know, if it's gonna be treated.
The primary reason that I've been able to understand through my research is security. Given the type of materials that are at the facility, they would be more susceptible potentially for theft, vandalism, things of that nature, so the security aspects of it are a key component of the conditional use permit criteria that we're talking about.
But if it's regulated to the extent that the pharmacy is, I can't buy Sudafed without showing my driver's license. Craziest thing in the world, but that's what the deal is, so, again, I don't, you know.
It's only a component of the business, in this case, it is the business. So just the quantity and the focus of the site is that.
The state.
Sure, but has that been addressed by, was, was Health and Human, I don't remember the agency that was regulating this.
I'll be honest, I haven't read the hundreds of pages of the Health and Human Services requirements.
Yeah, I was just looking at the information was here, and it spoke to an organization, an agency that would be regulating it. So I didn't know, I was imagining that they, 'cause I haven't read the hundred pages either, but I was imagining that they would be having those regulation, rules in place of how it would have to be secured and so on.
I suspect they leave it up to the towns and their ordinances.
You'd be surprised.
I suspect it's more copied, is wrong, but based on a CVS, a pharmacy Walgreens, it, it's a medical dispensary of a legal drug, that's ultimately what it will become. And I'm guessing that the security and hours of operation are going to reflect a typical CVS or Walgreens, because it's, it's a similar type of operation.
But with the, like the CVS, there's only a certain section that is high security, majority of it isn't. This whole, the whole building would have to have a high security, even entrance, right? Because that's the whole purpose.
The, the criteria that we're talking about, that were proposed here, is that they need to have a security plan that takes into account measures to ensure the safe delivery of the product to the facility, included permitted times for delivery, how the product is secured on the site, how patient transactions will be facilitated, facilitated to ensure safety, and that the security plan be reviewed and approved by the police department.
And remember, this is new, and maybe there are things that we would not be able to consider. I mean, the pharmacy's been, been around a long time, the narcotics sort of control has been in for a long time. This is relatively new, so perhaps we're being a little over cautious, but better than that than, gee, we didn't think of that when something happens, I guess that's where I'm, and no harm, no foul.
I'd rather.
It's not stopping.
My, my general philosophy in these types of ordinance, these types of ordinance amendments, where is something that's new to a state or a region, is to be on the conservative side, 'cause it's easier to waive or grant waivers to the requirements than it is to retroactively have to add additional requirements to something that comes forward.
And that's fair enough, it's redundancy in legislation, if you will, that bothers me, I can't use my phone now, because they couldn't enforce texting laws. So, but what I do think of is when down at AL Prime, when they wanted to open up, they wanted to have a convenience store, and they had been offering service, auto mechanic service. And I remember a member on the planning board sitting right next to me who was concerned that they'd be selling alcohol in such a busy row. So I, I don't know that we're there anymore, but it's, it's just, people, I think, get all wound up in a bunch over something that is now being considered a drug. all wound up in a bunch over something that is now being considered a drug, and so that's why I'm just curious, but thank you.
I think there's a certain amount of due process that, this is my opinion, we have to be able to demonstrate. There are going to be people that are going to be nervous about it, and you're right, I perceive it very much like a pharmacy, because it's a controlled drug. But I think, because it's so new, the public is going to be nervous, and I think our demonstrating concern and controls as much as we can might help relieve some, not relieve it, but subsided a little bit, in terms of we're just not ignoring it. Bill?
Well, I was going to ask you, as a nurse, have you ever been to a pharmacy that does compounded drugs?
There aren't that many. There was only one in Asher now, I believe. Wingate is the only one that does a compound.
I visited one up in Littleton that was in a secure location. They had to buzz you in, there was an individual working. Now, we're talking compounded drugs, so you're not talking, you know, not just controlled substances, you're talking about the whole thing, but still, the whole, to me, the idea is the symbol of what...
Where they actually make the drugs.
They actually make, compounding drugs, they actually make the drugs on site. I'm sorry, I should have explained that.
You're actually mixing.
They used to do that, Bedford Pharmacy used to do that.
Bedford Pharmacy.
They used to do that right at the counter.
That's right.
In the supermarket that I worked in. Look around, look around the back of the counter, and the guy'd be...
Was that near the soda fountain, or?
No, no, the soda fountain was up at Woolworth's. But he'd be up there, and he'd be filling, he'd be filling capsules.
What, are you 100 years old? I mean, dear God.
Close.
I'll put a good word with him for you, if you want.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess, I'd ask my colleagues, because I floated the idea of whether or not we want to establish hours in the ordinance. Do we, do we really want to do that, or do we want to leave it to the planning board's jurisdiction?
I'm comfortable with the planning board.
Okay, that's fine.
Tom, did you want to say something? I thought you moved your hand.
No, no, not at this point.
Okay. On a personal level, I think your point, Dan, is well-taken. The reality is, I mean, we can't debate whether it should or shouldn't be. It is. And I think we need to reflect, as I've already mentioned, due process and APA to be able to set up some system by which we can critically look at and allow the planning board to have the ordinance to be able to look at that. So, again, might it be too strict to a certain extent? Yeah, maybe it's overkill, but as Tim already mentioned, you can always loosen. You can never tighten up once it's loose.
Remember, remember the great fear of video games.
Well, that's what I think of, those type of things.
Okay. I mean, the debate on the floor at town meeting that year was just unbelievable. It was right out of '76 trombones. I mean, you know, it was right out of the Music Man, and they were talking about all the evil things that could happen.
Starts with T and it rhymes with P.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And so, and we started out with a very restrictive...
Yes, we did.
A very restrictive ordinance. And finally, when we rewrote these, we said, hey, this is stupid, you know?
But, and then you changed as you're understanding.
Right.
And, you know, as a nurse, I do understand the medical need, and I'm really happy that it's coming, but I also understand the fear of the slippery slope, and that's what people are concerned about. So, if we can sort of make that slippery slope a little bit, you know, less slippery, that was a good correlation.
People should, people should see the rules that are in place, in plain simple.
So, anyway, what's the pleasure of the board?
Point of interest, Madam Chair, is it a referral to the planning board or a motion to a second reading?
Motion to a second reading.
No, it's a...
Motion to a public.
Refer to the planning board.
No.
It does include a referral to the planning board, because typically...
Okay, that's new, then.
The typical process is that the zoning ordinance amendments originate at the planning board and then come for a first reading with the council. But because this ordinance originated with the council, it needs to be referred to.
The charter has provision for the referral to the planning board. So, the motion would be to...
Refer to the planning board.
Accept, accept the, accept the first reading and to refer to the planning board for their advice and to be on...
Plan the second reading.
Move it to a second reading.
Which would also be our, which would be our public hearing.
Right.
And that would be the 20th of August.
Right, well, because of time.
Some of...
Everyone understand that?
That's a public hearing on the 20th of August?
Correct. But that would be after the planning board.
The planning board public hearing will be August 18th at the regular planning board meeting. The council public hearing would follow two days later with the recommendation of the planning board for their council's second reading and public hearing.
And then we have to wait at least a week before we can have our third reading.
Before we can have your third reading and adoption.
Is that too big of an assumption to think that the planning board's going to...
Well, we'll have the response from the planning board at the next meeting, right?
Yes, you will.
So, we will have received information, recommendations from the planning board to be able to discuss at that public hearing.
And if we want to make changes, that's what the second reading's all about. We can make the changes at that time.
Correct.
If we so desire.
Correct. Is that, does everyone understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you've made that motion, Bill?
Thank you, Tom.
And second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mahon. And do we need to actually note and summarize the sections, or do we say, as suggested by the zoning ordinance presented?
In terms of the public hearing notice the council puts together, it would essentially mimic what I'm going to be putting together tomorrow for the planning board for your...
But does the motion have to, yes?
Tonight, it does not, because Tim explained it pretty explicitly.
Just want to make sure we cover all bases. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And against, 6-0-0.
Thank you again very much, and thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much, Tim.
Tim, thank you.
And thank you, Tom, is right.
Good work, Tom. Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to item number three in new business, application and membership agreement with Health Trust, submitted by Tom Ange, Eileen Cabanel. The town council will consider amendments to the application and membership agreement proposed by Health Trust to consider adopting the certificate of authorizing resolution and to authorize the town manager to sign any necessary paperwork. Eileen?
Okay. We received boilerplate type of agreement from the Health Trust that periodically the council needs to adopt as being, you know, in order to belong to the Health Trust, which we currently do and will this, this whole fiscal year. I took it upon myself, because I took exception to some of the language in there, to suggest some modifications to the boilerplate that they gave. I personally don't believe that, that an insurance company, for all intents and purposes, as the town of Merrimack is primarily rated on our own experience, we, in the bylaws and in this document, it says that we concur that if we leave the trust, any money that is left over from previous years' surpluses of our own experience, we forfeit. So, for instance, this year, we're getting approximately $500,000, but if we didn't go with them, we would lose $500,000. So, as I said, I took it upon myself to have that language drawn up differently than what the Health Trust has done, and kind of softened it a little bit, because I understand that, according to Peter Bragdon, this is before one of the higher-level courts, and the decision will be coming down relatively soon. So, in, in the suggested language, it says that the council agrees that if the court is in favor of the methodology that the Health Trust is using, that we will, we will comply. So, in other words, if the court says it's legal for them to keep that money if you don't join them, then we have to, we have to agree with that and comply. Otherwise, we don't concur with the language.
Yes, Finley?
I mean, the way I read it, it appears, according to Mr. Bragdon, that that language has been that way for a long time. It just clarifies it. Is that true?
Well, that's kind of interesting. We had, Peter and I had a discussion about that, and he seemed to think that we were bound by it, because we had agreed to the, to the bylaws. We'd already agreed to the bylaws in a, in a previous agreement, and I said to him, you are a new organization, and you have new bylaws, and we, we don't have to agree, it doesn't carry that, that if it's a new business with new bylaws that we're now subsequently, you know, tied into the old business with the old bylaws.
Because it's, it appears as though they don't trust their own product, you know, that they're trying to lock you in. And I think it was a great catch, and I'm surprised that we didn't notice it sooner than the previous agreements.
I'm not sure there was. The previous agreements, no.
It wasn't there. Yes, it was.
A very good catch.
It was.
It's been in their agreements since they started back in '82 or '81 or whenever.
I think I told you that when I worked for the city of Summersworth about 20 years ago, had the same situation with a property and liability through NHMA at the time, and they said that we couldn't go, we couldn't, if we went to another carrier, that we couldn't get the money, that they were giving a rebate that year from, from prior years, and I went down there and got it. So, for whatever that's worth.
It's been a rather...
It just feels sleazy.
Yeah.
Like, you can't change, or you're not going to get your money that you owed.
It's become more of an issue in the last couple of years because of the rulings with the return of surplus. In my, in my previous eight years of being in the finance department, we got maybe one refund, and it was basically a rate of refund on our, our premium, and reduced our premium. So, we, and it wasn't, it was like $5,000. So, we're not talking, now we're talking significant amounts of money.
Dan, and then, Dan?
Unfortunately, as, as many of us know, when I say this, you're all going to go, yeah.
One, two, three, yeah.
Five years ago, when I first started, we, I was amazed when I first started, where I said, well, let's just drop them and chop, let's go out, look for another insurance carrier. And the answer came back, well, there's nobody there. Nobody, the Anthems and all these other, United, all these other insurance companies throughout America does not sell the products to municipal employees, et cetera, et cetera. So, whether we like Health Trust or not, we may find ourselves that we're right back where we started with, there is nobody else out there to take our business. So, I just wanted to make that comment for, for what it's worth.
And I, all I'm, the only thing that I was just trying to say is that it boldly says it in the document that you agree with it. And from my point of view, I do not agree with it. They hidden it in the bylaws, and I didn't see it out there that, you know, you actually have to sign a document saying that you agree with the concept of it. It bothered me.
Tom?
Well, it, it didn't use to say that you agree with it. It just said that we're retaining it. If you leave, we keep it. And part of the reason is that it's a self, well, it's loosely known as a self-funded pool. And so, the rationale was you would be leaving the other members of the pool on the hook if you, if you departed and took your money with you, and then there was, there were subsequent claims. So, you know, that, that was part of the original, and the other part of the original rationale was to hold on to you.
Sure.
Okay?
Eileen, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, just, over the years, things have changed in that the smaller communities, I believe it's, it used to be under 100 employees was, were in, actually in a pool, and so they all had the same rate. So...
State pool, like New Hampshire?
New Hampshire, not, not state employees, but there was a, there's an under 50, there was an under 100 pool, 100 employees. If you're a town with under 100 employees, you all have the same rate as somebody else who had an under, under 100, 100 employees. They've subsequently changed that to 50 employees to be, in order to be in the pool. And the bigger that you are as a municipality, the less that they use of the pooling aspect. They rate you primarily on your own experience. So, a town that is very small, that is part of a pool, that's a very good valid point.
It's diluted.
But, right, or it really isn't even their part. I mean, they could have, they could have jacked the price up, because they had a lot of catastrophics in theirs, whereas ours is, is for the most part, based on our own, very own experience. So, you can more easily, or much more easily, equate your own experience and the money that's attached to it to Merrimack's experience.
Finley, did you want to say something?
Nothing before, I guess. No, it's the, it's in the overview of the Health Trust membership agreement, it's the fact that they pointed it out. I think they recognized that it was a little, maybe, I don't know, it just seemed odd that all of a sudden it showed up.
Well, somebody's suing them, that's why.
Yeah. They had, let's see, Salem sued them, Portsmouth, Dover.
Over this?
Yeah.
And that's what we're waiting for there?
And that was one of the points of contention with the investigation by the Securities Division of the Secretary of State's office was, was the retention of what, of the surplus, and then how they were allocating it for redistribution. And, by the way, I, you know, please understand, I'm going to recuse on this vote because of who I worked for for 26 years. The other, the other competitive pool...
Which isn't anymore.
Which isn't any, well, the health part of it isn't anymore.
Right.
So, you know, but we were the reason that they wanted to do all these crazy things that they did that ended up in court with, because they had to compete with us, which is laughable. But anyway. Okay.
Enough said.
Yes, Bill?
Eileen, what's the downside to opposing this?
I don't know. I asked, I asked Peter Bragdon that question, and he said he would get back to me, and And I, I think it's, I think it's, I actually think that it's harmless in the way that it's written, in that we say that we don't, as a philosophy, agree with it, but if the court says that we must, we will abide by it.
I guess, why are we in a rush to do this?
We have to.
We have to?
Yes.
We don't have to, we could vote not to, not to do this.
If you don't want to belong to the Health Trust, and you want me to go out and get new health insurance within a couple of weeks, I'd be...
So, it's a contract, basically? A renewal of a contract.
Well, it's not the parrot's words, but if you're, is it almost like, well, we disagree with, with your philosophy, what's the word you used? We disagree with your flaw, with your...
Methodology.
Your philosophy, but we're still signing. Is that, are you almost looking for like an out to say, we disagree with this option of you taking, keeping our money if we leave, but we're, we're not leaving, but we just won't let you know that we don't, we don't like it? I mean, is that...
Pretty, pretty much it, because it's in your face that says you agree with that idea.
So, we don't agree, but here's still our signature.
Here's our signature, and we're modifying the agreement. And if in the future, that the court decides on, against the Health Trust, then we will have been out there to say that we did not agree to it, in theory.
Okay.
Up to you.
Okay, any other discussion? Are we ready for a vote?
I like the change that Eileen's made.
I do, too.
Is there a motion?
I don't think it doesn't, well, that's why I'm going, I'm going to be asking...
Needs a signature.
I'm going to be asking for a motion now.
Certificate authorizing resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion, and there does have to be specific language in the motion. So, are you going to do that, Mr. Dwyer?
I guess so.
Okay, Dan Dwyer's going to make a motion.
I make a motion to, I hereby certify to Health Trust, Inc., that the following is a true copy of a resolution adopted by the governing body of the town of Merrimack at a meeting duly held on July 16th, 2015. Resolved that the town of Merrimack shall participate as a member in the Health Trust pooled risk management... risk management program for the provision of group medical and/or other benefit plans in accordance with the application and membership agreement in New Hampshire RSA five dash B. Also resolve that Eileen Cabanel, Town Manager of Merrimack, New Hampshire, is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to Health Trust on behalf of the town of Merrimack the application and membership agreement in substantially the form presented to this meeting. I also resolved that Eileen Cabanel, Town Manager of Merrimack, is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to Health Trust a certificate of this resolution. I further certify that the foregoing resolution remains in full force and effect without modifications. That's it, Madam Chair?
Okay, second?
Second.
Who's that, Tom? Tom Kinnick?
The other Tom.
I heard the voice, I couldn't tell which one it came from. Did you want to make a comment, discussion first of all? Dan, do you want to address?
Just, just first, I just, sorry.
I just would like you to either concur or not concur with the changes first. So you should vote on that and then vote on this.
So we need two different motions?
Yes.
The first one having to do with the changes. And then the second one having to do with the language.
The Dan.
Of the authorizing resolution. As soon as Dan Dwyer stops talking, I'll be. And the second has to do with the language of the resolution you just read. So Dan, if it's okay with you, we'll keep that. Can we have an initial motion related to the changes?
So, so moved.
So that's Tom Kinnick.
Changes as presented by Eileen Cabanel for the Health Trust application and membership agreement.
Second by Finley Rathaus. Is there any discussion on that particular point? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against and one abstaining, is that right? You abstaining on this? So that would be five zero one, Tom Mahon abstaining. Now, the next motion, which has already been made by Dan Dwyer and seconded by Tom Kinnick, has to do with the language of the resolution. Okay, we have a first. Now we have, open for discussion. Do you want to address either one of you? Bill, you look like you're.
Take Finley first, I'm trying to formulate what I want to say.
Finley?
So to make it so Dan does not have to read that again, I just want to understand for certain that that language speaks to our, our meeting and vote that we, and we'll.
That's, you need to also say, and to include the changes that were approved that.
It says, and substantially the form presented to this meeting.
Yeah, that's right, and that's what I just want to understand. I think that did it.
And the change is approved.
Isn't that what that says?
So that's why the motion was made about the changes. And that second resolution has incorporated in it and the changes as a result of this meeting. Okay. Is that?
Yeah.
Bill?
You're correct, you're, what you were concerned about is, is in there, yeah.
Is that, is that the certificate that they supplied to us? Has anybody looked at that in light of the change of the language?
As, as Dan just said, that it says that, that I am hereby authorized, directed to execute and deliver to the Health Trust on behalf of the town of Merrimack the application and membership agreement in substantially the form presented to this meeting.
This is, this is what was presented to the meeting with the asterisks on it.
And we voted on the changes already.
But that's not the language that they proposed.
No, that's not what it says.
This is like, no, it's, this is language that they proposed, but we modified it.
Yeah, I think you might want to think about being a little more specific.
Well, I'm going to give it to you then and I'm going to ask you to.
But I can't do that since I recused.
You cannot.
Okay.
But if the understanding and the testimony here, the meaning and what we're verbalizing is going to be clear that the intent is we changed it first and now we're incorporating. Yes, Paul?
Sorry. Right after it says the first sentence, I hereby certify Health Trust, Inc. that the following is a true copy of a resolution adopted by the governing board of the town of Merrimack at this meeting duly held on July sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen with the following modifications to number four, number eight, and number fourteen.
So you're including that in the motion?
These are the changes according to the documents that was there, that Eileen just talked about in the changes.
So those numbers should be in the resolution.
And that will, that might, because what will happen is that we'll send the whole thing back to them, sign with the changes. So that will take into account, those are changes.
Do you accept those changes, Dan?
Yes.
And Tom Kinnick, you seconded, you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can, just for the, because when you see this markup in our packet where it marked up Health Trust application and membership agreement, this is the work that the staff did. So when you see that major paragraph that Tom was referring to, these were the changes that was not, that did not derive from Health Trust, it derived from our staff.
Sounds good. Okay, are we ready for vote?
No.
No. Bill, go right ahead.
Eileen, the agreement is date certain, July first, but there's no end date and it's all predicated on the language in the bylaws that if we wanted to get out, we have to notify within sixty days of the day that we want to get out. Now we can't join for two years. Is that my understanding? If we leave Health Trust, we have to give sixty days' notice. Upon leaving, we can't join Health Trust back for a minimum of two years.
That sounds right.
They say that, but their board can waive that, which they have in the past.
We've changed before.
We've changed before and we've had that provision before.
I wouldn't think we would change unless we knew somebody was taking us on.
Right, right, and we did before.
Yeah.
My question is, do we know how often the Health Trust has amended and changed their bylaws? And if so, have they notified us of those applicable changes and sought authorization from us to accept those particular changes to the bylaws?
No, they do not. This is the first time that I've ever seen, apparently it's come here before, but I have never, in my experience, ever seen a document like that. I, coming from the Health Trust or NHMA or anyone, all I ever had was a sheet of paper that explained what, that I understood that this is the rates that we have, these are the plans that we have, and I agree to that, and I would personally sign it. So, you know, Paul said that this has come before this board before in some other form, but I have never seen it before in my experience.
Is it, is it just me or does it, does it bother people that they refer to, instead of having a date certain when your contract ends and then renegotiating, that they refer to the language in the bylaws so that your, your membership is, for all intents and purposes, in perpetuity until you decide to terminate? Does anybody find that odd?
So it's automatic renewal?
I'm just, it's automatic renewal. It's so you don't have, we don't have to go through this exercise every year. And when we leave, we leave. All we have to do is comply with the requirement.
Sixty-day notice.
The sixty-day notice to say we're gone, or we intend to leave in sixty days. And it, and it's, and it's an open-ended piece.
So the answer is no, it doesn't bother you?
Doesn't bother me.
Doesn't bother me either.
So I'm, I'm the lonely man on the island right now that's slightly bothered.
We have you separated.
I think it's a good point.
The optics are appropriate.
I think it's, I think it's a good point, you know, as you said, if the, if they decide to change the bylaws, the entire bylaws all over again while we're in, in, involved with them, then we're, we've concurred with, with every, with the bylaws in whatever form they take.
No, we've concurred with the ones that were presented to the council. If they change them, they have to come back and get our concurrence.
Is that what you were going to say, Paul?
In, in two thousand and eleven was the last time they had a bylaw change. And at that time, it's brought in front of the council and we signed it. This is a new bylaw change in two thousand and fifteen. That is why we're coming back in and they strengthened their language on the return of surplus.
Okay, gotcha.
John?
So every time they, every time they change, it's supposed to come back to the membership with the change?
It has to. I mean, our resolution said we accept this version. We haven't accepted any other version or a future version.
Because Health Trust is the only gig in town, we're kind of.
Well, no, they're not.
They're not anymore. They're not anymore.
So you would say that in the next year, you're going to be starting to go out for bits?
Okay.
Normal operation?
I, I just, I.
And we have switched back and forth before.
I just, I have a problem. You know, if, if we're entitled to a surplus if we leave, I, I think it's a municipality.
That's up to the judge.
I understand that. I understand that.
That's why the language is in there.
I just, is, I concurred with the other language, so, okay.
Okay, so we're ready to vote? I believe we did not vote yet, right? We have a first by Dan Dwyer and a second by Tom Kinnick. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any against, nay, none. Tom, you're still abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, so five zero one with Tom Mahon abstaining. Okay, getting there. Protocol for scoping meeting, really not much to say. We mentioned a little bit earlier that the scoping meetings are occurring on July twenty-ninth and thirtieth, twenty-ninth in Nashua, the Raton Hotel, July thirtieth in Milford, Town Hall. I'm going to be representing the town council for verbal and written testimony. We did have our attorney and it is available, copy's available here and it will be on the website. For the public, there's some FERC scoping meeting tips. And the majority of it, or maybe sixty percent of it, has to do with logistics and sort of a procedural thing. At the very end is probably the meat of it, having to do with issues to discuss. It was recommended by the attorney to be able to help the public understand that their focus of, they probably only have a minute or two tops because you're going to be able to, there's going to be a lot of people testifying. So you should have, not only if you're going to do a verbal, if you have the opportunity, but you should have written testimony to be able to submit that time. So have that in writing, but also try to focus your approach on the purpose of the FERC meetings, which has to do with environmental impact, safety impact, and economic impact. Because that's what their intention is to be able to respond to those concerns. Okay, so this scoping meeting tips will be put on the website tomorrow morning. And it is just a guide, that's all, but that is by far the most important part of it. Right? Okay, now can we move on to the minutes?
One more thing on that, if I may.
Yes, go right ahead.
I think people should realize that their written remarks can be much more extensive and amplifying than their, their verbal comment. You know, usually what you see in these sorts of things is that they will say, here are my key points, boom, 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 and I'm submitting this additional information to you in writing to be entered into the record. So they have that opportunity. Again, if you're only going to get a minute or two.
It's like summarize, yeah.
Yeah, because the, what, the normal, the normal rate for speech is a hundred and twenty-five words a minute. Okay, so.
Unless you stick to it.
Yeah. Unless. No.
That he knew that is amazing.
No, but good points.
He runs a ham radio, he knows how fast he can speak.
But good points, Tom, that is exactly, I would agree with that.
No, when I do training programs and stuff, when I used to do training programs and things, it was, how many words can you spew out in a minute?
Clearly.
Yeah, clearly.
And part of it is, as long as people know, they're not going to be put into a situation of being frustrated because they aren't able to say what they want to say. That they know they're going to be limited, focused on the important issues, but say what you want to say in the writing and submit that. Okay.
Question?
Yes, Bill?
Do we want to entertain a motion memorializing the fact that what you mentioned earlier, that we wanted to write a letter to FERC requesting that they postpone the scoping?
Well, I think I made that comment, do we have to?
I know you did, I just didn't know if you want.
I don't, yeah. Huh?
I think it's pretty clear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, minutes from June twenty-fifth.
Madam Chair, I would move the Thursday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, town council meeting minutes with the following modifications.
Go for it.
On page four, regarding the testimony for Carol DePero, it's capital D, small i, capital P.
That's, and line twenty-six.
It's twelve seventeen and twenty-six.
Excellent, okay, so those three places.
I'm moving forward to page fourteen, lines sixteen and thirty-eight. It's Devens with an E, D-E-V-E-N-S, not O-N-S. Continuing on to page fifteen, line twelve. It reads, Councilor Kinnick quested. I believe it should be questioned.
Did you go on a quest?
I think you went on a quest that night.
I quest all the time.
Okay. So you, you're okay with leaving it as quested, is that what you're for?
Thanks, I didn't catch that one.
Moving on to page seventeen, line five. Mic is spelt M-I-C, I believe that's colloquial, it should read M-I-K-E.
Could you spell colloquial?
I'm sorry?
Could you spell colloquial?
Colloquial, C-O-double-O-O-Q-U-I-A-L, colloquial.
So bad.
How is it, but key the mic, what, how do you spell that mic?
Oh, it's microphone, it's M-I-C.
But Mike, M-I-K-E is.
That's a name.
I understand that, but it's also.
It's used either way.
It's used either way.
Key, how about putting in, key there, microphone? That solves the whole problem.
Okay.
Very good.
That's my job, that's my job as the chair.
You are getting good at this.
Page twenty-one. Correction to Carol DePero's name again and on, and on line thirty-six.
Yeah.
And also reflected on page twenty-two at line thirty-eight and page twenty-three on line nineteen.
So she does a cross connection, cross correction.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Very good. Any other changes? Yes, Tom?
Yes, thank you. On page six and seven and nine, when we opened and closed public hearings, Chairman Harrington was not at the meeting, so I would think that Chairman Harrington didn't do that.
I was in spirit, however.
Lines five and nine on page six.
That's pretty funny.
Page seven, twenty-seven and thirty-one, and page nine, nineteen and twenty-three. Should say that Vice Chair Mahon.
Mahon, that's right.
Go catch talk.
And then on page seventeen, at line eighteen, it talks about my remark, expending sixty-seven hundred dollars at this time rather than four thousand dollars for the voting system makes a lot of sense. I want to add the word repair after voting system because the whole process is talking about a voting system repair.
What line is that?
On line eighteen. Just adding repair at the end of that line after voting system.
Okay, so for the voting system repair makes a lot of sense.
Right, because the voting system is going to be replaced in the next couple of years. No point in repairing it and then.
Yeah.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any other changes? None, okay, I have a motion by Bill Boyd. Do I have a second?
Second.
With the changes?
Yeah.
Tom Kinnick? Okay, any other suggestions or comments? None. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And I'm going to, and I'm going to abstain, so it's five yes, five zero one, with Nancy Harrington abstaining. Okay, comments from the press, don't run. They're too busy. They're too busy with all the candidates and the state.
Yep.
Okay, comments from the public? Please do.
That would be you.
My name is Kim Dinsmore. I live at 4 Whittier Road. Listening to the comments regarding the scoping meeting that's coming up, I, I'm really grateful that you're going to put as much information on the town website as possible. Clearly, there's a great need for people to be educated in terms of what this meeting is and how important it is for them to participate in it. And I don't know the answer to this question, but are there any other venues or avenues that you could present that information to people? Because I don't know how many people go to the town website on a timely manner and the meeting is, is coming up so quickly. Would maybe an article in the Merrimack Journal, even in their online version, I don't know if it would be in time to go to press or anything like that, but would you consider trying to put that information out there in other venues?
We can certainly take that under advisement, for sure. We can take a look at it. I'm sorry, press release? Press release is a good idea.
Because I, I think maybe that might reach a wider audience, maybe some of the older members of our community versus...
Who might be able to access it there rather than...
Correct.
Not a bad idea.
All right.
So, we should consider other resources for...
That wouldn't be a cost, costly for you to do, so...
Good idea.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, comments from the council. Well, I have a comment I want to make. After the events of today, I just want to be able to express my deep concern and condolences to the families of those full Marines that were murdered in Chattanooga, Tennessee. And please keep their families in your thoughts and prayers. Not a good way to start, start a meeting, but important. Okay, and nothing else to say, then we can have a motion adjournment. By Tom Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ananmas 6-0-0.